All right, good evening everyone. It's 5:30 so we're gonna go ahead and kick off our forum tonight. I'm Ryan Moon. I serve as the Director of Government Relations and Government Policy of the Greater Des Moines Partnership. And I just want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Of course, our guests, but especially our two candidates up here. We also want to thank the Ankeny Chamber of Commerce for hosting this and the Government Policy...
Yeah, Government Relations Committee.
Government Relations Committee for helping lead these efforts up here. As someone who's a government relations nerd and loves policy, I'm really excited to be here. I know a lot of people are as well. But I just wanted to, you know, remind everyone of the importance of civility. I don't think we'll need it tonight, right? But it always is a good reminder when we do these forums. It is not easy to run for public office. No matter what different opinions we have, I'm sure both of these people understand to put your name on a ballot, to put you yourself out there, but it's not only yourself, it's your friends, it's your family, and express those opinions. So I think, as someone personally that's never ran for a public office besides the H. W. Board, I understand how challenging that can be. So I just ask the audience to be respectful to both of our candidates. And please hold your applause, especially please hold your boos for anything you may disagree with as we go into our forum tonight. So our forum tonight will carry the following format. I will ask opening remarks from each candidate, and they'll have 90 seconds. Then we will have questions from the Ankeny Area Chamber of Commerce membership. Melissa asked for questions in advance, so we have some of those with me up here. If there is some additional time, you may ask for some questions from the audience. And then each question, you'll have 90 seconds to respond. We also have our great timekeepers up here who will help keep us on schedule. And then lastly, we will hold closing remarks, which again, another 90 seconds for closing remarks up here. All right, to get us started, like I said, we're gonna start it with opening remarks from each candidate. We'll have 90 seconds, and please pay attention to the timer up front, and I will also may remind you when your time has concluded. But we will start with Ken Hagaman. If you want to go ahead and introduce yourself, and you have 90 seconds for opening remarks.
Okay, thanks. First, I would like to thank the Chamber and everybody for being here tonight to be at this important event to find out, you know, what the candidates stand for, what my skills are, what my background is, so that you can make an informed voting decision. A little bit about my background. My husband, Tom, and I have lived in Iowa for over 35 years, and we have one adult son that lived in Ankeny, that graduated from Ankeny High School. And I retired from Pioneer Hybred down the road, where I started out in the labs doing biotech, went on to pass the patent bar and prosecute patents for the company, and then moved on to negotiating research licenses for the company. I am not a politician, and I'm running because the decisions that the board makes affect our lives. And they can either do that for the better or for the worse. I'm running because I believe that the county needs to address the growth that is happening and to ensure that it's smart growth and sustainable for the long run. I am running to lead on how we can reduce the strain on our communities caused by extreme weather events. And I am running to focus on supporting our public schools and public services to reevaluate taxpayer money.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor, do you care to provide some opening remarks?
Sure. Thank you everyone for your attending today, and thank you for the Chamber for hosting this event. Thank you for everyone who's watching it, recorded later date. Hope you get the information you need to make an informed decision. My name is Mark Home. I'm currently serving as the Mayor of the City of Ankeny. I've been the Mayor for three years. Prior to that, I was a council member for 10 years. 10 years ago, I, before I ran for council, I was on the Board of Adjustment. I started to take notice of what was going on in Ankeny. It was spending, it was spending, it was spending. 13 years ago, I ran for council to change the culture of spending in Ankeny. Ankeny has lowered its tax levy nine years in a row. We have the lowest full city service in Polk County. We went from $12.02 per thousand to $99. A little bit about myself, I grew up in a farm in southern Iowa. I went to Iowa State. I met a girl who graduated from Ankeny High School. I'm on the shore. I've got three boys attending Ankeny schools. I love our community. I am running for supervisor because I want to focus on lowering the tax levy to the county and fiscal responsibility and good government. What's irritating about leading the fifth largest city in the state of Iowa when you're in Polk County is everything you do here in Ankeny is basically ignored or reversed by the county. Their levy's not gone down. They do not have fiscal responsibility. And frankly, with all the lawsuits going on, they don't have good government. And it's a travesty that at the local level, we have such poor representation in Polk County. That's why I'm running for Polk County Supervisor, through sore good government, fiscal responsibility, and a lower tax levy.
Awesome, thank you. So I have a list of questions that were submitted in advance by our attendees here tonight. I just received these on note card, I made them up. And so we're just gonna go ahead and jump into it. And Mayor, I'm gonna start with you. The first question is, what should Polk County do to help with homelessness? In 90 seconds.
What Polk County should do to help with homelessness? Well, that is not an easy question because there's so many things that affect homelessness. But what the county can control is the tax levy. For all those people who are on fixed income, and they watch their property taxes go up, their insurance go up, and their living paycheck to paycheck, or social security check, and they continue to watch their taxes go up. I mean, property taxes are the only thing that you're stuck with. You can choose to not go buy stuff, pay sales tax. But one way to prevent homelessness in Polk County is to focus on lowering the tax levy and allow the people to invest their own money in what they see fit, and to allow them to buy food, healthcare, childcare, everything they need to be successful, to avoid getting put on the street. There are many other things we can do. There are several successful programs. A lot of them unfortunately originate with, through the Sheriff's Department. We need to continue to invest, target first people with mental issues away from jail and give the services and assistance they need.
Thank you. Ken, same question. What should Polk County do to help with homelessness?
Well, I think there's things, of course, we can do to improve affordable housing. I'm not sure that the tax levy is a big one. There are a lot of problems in the county. There are about 660 homeless people at any one time. And those reasons for those people being homeless are many. So I would look at the study that was done by the county in February. And it has figured out that we have a $20 million annual gap in the amount we should be spending on homelessness. I think we need to look at that study and decide where the money can best be spent. There are gonna be mental health problems. And there are going to be people who are never going to be employable. And so, of course, we have to, you know, stop families from spiraling down when they hit a hard knock in the road and to prevent them from becoming homeless in the first place. But there is always gonna be mental health problems, and we really need to address that in the county.
Thank you, Ken. All right, the next question, I'm gonna start with Ken, and our work our way over to the mayor. Ken, what are your thoughts on the current Polk County property tax rates?
I think that the Polk County tax rates are pretty much where they should be. I acknowledge they should be kept in check. You know, when a county is growing, there's not a lot of efficiencies of size that can be taken and where money can be saved. So, you know, there's gonna be more mental health problems when the county grows. There's gonna be more road maintenance when the county grows. Is there gonna be less crime when the county grows? I don't think so. These are really high intensive services. And, you know, of course, I would look for efficiencies wherever possible. But, you know, we're a growing county, and so obviously, there's something that's going on right. And I just don't think we have the opportunity to cut taxes in any extreme way. Because we need services. There's more to life than just reducing taxes. We need to make sure that people's lives are stress-free. You know, we need to work on residential flooding. We need to make sure that people don't have sewer water and running into their basements. These things cause stress on our communities.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor, what are your thoughts on the current Polk County property tax rate?
I touched on it briefly, it's too high. You know, the thing about what's happened in Polk County is the growth in Polk County is coming from Ankeny. It's coming from Altoona. It's not coming from Des Moines itself. Ankeny's grown from the 2010 census of 38,000 to where we're gonna come in about 78,000 right now. We've lowered our levy in the last 10 years since I've served, from $12.02 per thousand to $99. And we've paid for everything. We've paid for growth. We've added police. We've added fire. So it is possible, as your valuation increases, to continue to reduce the levy, because that's what it's about. And services increase, follow-ups increase. You look at the county, they've grown by 52% valuation last 10 years. Their leverage remained the same. Let's not forget, the state legislature removed the mental health levy from the county and took that over. The state did zero drop in the county levy. Prairie Meadows, half a billion dollar profit machine is supposed to be for property tax relief in schools. Polk County's levy from '14 has gone from $11.72 to about $11.32, and it's fluctuated in between in the rule. The urban hasn't done much either. What the supervisors are doing is collecting all of your wealth, and they're transferring it. She mentioned a $20 million gap in homelessness. Where do you think that money would come from? I mean, the money is yours, invest as you see fit. The county needs to focus on clean water, clean roads, and stuff. What would come here to Ankeny? It doesn't require tremendous tax increases, revenue grabs.
Thank you, Mayor. Going right back to you with the next question. What does Polk County do best, and what does it need to improve?
Well, what Polk County does best? Well, that's a good question. Polk County, of course, provides our police. The Sheriff's Department is top-notch. Polk County also provides health and human services, which, you know, a lot of cities do not provide. So there is an inch there. What the county does not do well is to stay above the bar of getting involved personally in political decisions, not letting their county administrator make decisions. They go and individually meet with property owners and make assurances. I've been out door knocking, and I've heard from hundreds of people who have all these reported issues with supervisor, multiple ones coming up, threatening them, doing intimidation, various other things. You know, these are stories from people who don't believe that's what elected officials should do. In Ankeny, we have a high standard of government. I don't come running in when somebody calls me and complains about something. I let staff handle it. I answer the calls from people. I listen. I try to bridge the gap between staff and what the citizen's concern is, and ultimately report back to the citizen along with staff. I don't run in to make certain assurances whether I know people or not.
Thank you. Ken, what does Polk County do best, and what needs to improve?
I would agree that Polk County has a very good Sheriff's Department. I believe they have a very good arts and recs or conservation department for recreation. They are, do a pretty good job of public health and mental health. But there's always need for improvement. And I do agree, there is way too much doing favors for certain people at the county level that I think needs to be nipped and stopped. There should not be favors given out. There should not be changes in procedure or protocols just because somebody knows somebody. And I think that especially the grant system that they have needs to be reevaluated, and that needs to prioritize our communities, our schools, our EMS, our fire departments. Because that's why Prairie Meadows was established in the first place. And last year, out of the 48 million, only 2.2% of that money given away was given to public schools.
Thank you, Ken. Coming right back to you, Ken, with the next question. When working with the board, how would you best, what is your vision of working with members of the board that maybe disagree with you?
Well, I, there'll be five of us, and of course, there's always compromise needed. I do believe that when it is brought to light, and when there is more publicity on what the decisions that the Port County Supervisors are making, that they can be persuaded pretty quickly to do the right thing. One of the problems is, is that so many of the decisions are made kind of in a vacuum. They have meetings that last like eight minutes long every other Tuesday. They vote on things, never say what their opinion or why they voted on something. It's just way too insular, and the public needs to know what the county is doing with their taxpayer money.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor, describe your vision of working with board members who disagree with you.
Sure. Good thing about being in office for 13 years, I worked for several of them. And when it comes January 1st, and I sit down and die-ass with them, it'll be a different story, where they're just gonna have to work with me. We have an understanding where we can make wins as part of the politics, as working, as I work with council. I'm also chairman of the NPO, which is a multi-governmental organization here that has 18 different community members. It's about finding ways to work together and knowing what you can agree on and not agree on. There is a lot of damage control that needs to be done. My primary was quite nasty. Several of the other supervisors got involved in it, and you know, that doesn't make for good politics. And they, when it comes time to do it, I'm gonna keep my head above water as I have the past 13 years. I'm gonna do what needs to be done to represent the people of this district and do what is best for everyone in this district. And if they wanna play their child's role games, or they played with other people and stuff, they can continue to do that. But at some point in time, the register and the media and social media is gonna notice, hey, why aren't all these other people, why are they being treated this way by the same people? So it's just a matter of doing what is right for the voters of this district. And I'm gonna keep my head above water, and I'm gonna do as I've done in the past 13 years. I'm gonna stay, try and true to my philosophy, my principles, and I'm gonna stay above the letter "L."
Thank you. All right, Mayor, crystal ball, looking in the future. All right, 15 years, Polk County. What's the biggest challenge that you think Polk County faces, and how would you address this challenge?
The biggest challenge that Polk County is gonna face in 15 years is the leakage of valuation to Dallas County and Warren County. The growth of Polk County, if you're not growing, I mean, it's a simple thing. If you're not growing, you're dying. And that is in terms of valuation. You've got northern Polk County and eastern Polk County, which are ripe for development. The engine that drives the state of Iowa is Polk County and the metro. And we need to continue to keep that going, because more and more people are moving to Polk County and the surrounding areas. So we need to continue to provide amenities that people wanna move here for and stay in Polk County and invest in Polk County. 15 years, we need to make sure that our transportation system is built around the idea that we're all interconnected, and not necessarily each city gets to pick their own, as what we are discovering through the NPO through years of planning, is that we need to be regional in this act. We have several other regional endeavors that are on their way that we need to continue to work on. The most recent is the CIWW, or Central Iowa Water Works Association. They got hired a new executive director that's assuring our water supply will be safe for the next 15-plus years. We had some issues with water quality over the past few years and water refinement. Coming together in the new system is going to fix that. The WRA, which is our Waste Reclamation Authority, is looking to the future. We need to continue to purify that water so that our waste is clean and the environment is kept, it's kept from the environment. So our biggest challenge is making sure that we don't shut down growth in Polk County.
Thank you. Ken, looking at your crystal ball here, 15 years in the future of Polk County, what's the biggest challenge, and how would you address this challenge?
I do believe the biggest challenge is growth and also climate change. I believe if we go on the same route that we've been going with as far as growth, if you're expecting growth to always be your backstop for doing better, then I think that's kind of a pyramid scheme. I think we need to be evaluating growth that is sustainable, and we need to be investing in infrastructure that is up to the standards that is needed and required. Because if you use substandard measures, designs, materials for building your roads now, you are causing that expense to be put further down the line so that the future taxpayers can pay that amount of money. So while we are not determining that we should have the best standards or the best practices for building our roads and our infrastructure, I don't know. Because in the end, that just adds to the amount of taxpayer burden down the line. And the way we're growing is not sustainable. Because we have tons of cul-de-sacs. We have infrastructure being built at super par materials. You know, I think we need to change that kind of thinking.
Thank you, Ken. Next question. And I know we've already talked a little bit about grants already, but I would love for both of you to elaborate more into that. What is your position on Polk County community grant programs? And how would you change them if you feel like they need to be changed?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to repeat that.
Absolutely. What is your position on Polk County community grant programs? And if you feel like there needs to be any change to them, what would you change?
Yeah, I do believe that they need to be focused more as originally intended, and they need to be focused on our public schools, our fire departments, and our EMS, all our public services, because that was an intent for them to help our local tax base. I do think they need to be more focused on what are the priorities in our community also. You know, some of these economic development projects, you know, who are they for? And in the long run, do they help all of our community? Or do they just help somebody that somebody seems to know? Do we need more shopping, strip malls? You know, all these things need to be reevaluated.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor, what is your position on Polk County community grant programs? If you feel like they need to be changed, how would you change them?
Sure. Over the last 10 years, the proceeds from Prairie Meadows have been reinvested through the grant program, the $1.8 billion. I'm unaware of those grants going up to development. But what they've gone through, for example, here in Ankeny, is with Friends and Library, the building we're sitting in. City Ban, Centennial Bronnic Club, Ankeny Schools. I think more can be done for Ankeny schools. I think Ankeny School got like a check for $138,000. So do the math of all the schools in Polk County and divide it up, and $138,000 out of $500 million is a lot. I think the grant program, the grant programs, and there's three major grant programs, need to have more light shed on them. They need to be cast out so more people can apply for them. They have more eyes on them, be more aware of them. So it's simply not supervisors go and search people and say, hey, do you wanna apply for a grant? Here's the application. There need to be transparency in the grant program. Talking to a lot of people in the city of Ankeny, we've applied for grants on certain things. We've encouraged Ankeny Ban and other things to continue to do this. It is, it is a challenge for small organizations to write grants. But you know, when we have this resource that's provided by the casino, one of two, which are publicly known in the entire nation, the grant program is feeding back to these organizations that could use the money. And that's what it's there for. That's part of the original intent of Prairie Meadows. So I think I need to be informed a little bit more how the whole work behind the scenes work. But I'm willing to sit down, figure it out, and again, I think transparency and equitable application process is needed.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, as we're sort of on the topic of regional involvement, do you think Polk County has the right amount of involvement with regional groups such as DART, Bravo, Catch Des Moines, and why?
I think that, yes, I think Polk County has representation on all those, because I've worked with all of them on all those boards. I believe that Polk County has a disproportionate voice in those boards. Polk County is not the cog that runs all the communities. They're not, they are not the leader of any of the metro cities where they like to believe that they are, where their voice carries more. You look at DART, there is virtually no DART ridership in the county. There are very few limited routes, and I know the supervisors are waiting on that. And if that's gonna be a topic, I'll reserve that for later. CVB, Bravo, obviously with the arts, with the civic center, with Wells Fargo, the county has a huge role in it because of the ownership of those facilities. The NPO, you look at the roads. Being the chairman of the NPO right now, Des Moines needs, or Polk County needs to invest more in the rural areas, and less in helping Des Moines with their mega projects. Of course, Des Moines is a big city. They get a tremendous amount of the portion of the STBG funding. But there needs to be more done for our bridges in the rural communities where we still have farm-to-market roads and the need for farmers to get their grains to co-ops. And so that point in time, the farmers would like to sell their land to development. They're gonna continue to farm that. They need to be able to get their grain to market. So I see the county having a disproportionate role. They need to allow the communities that run Polk County, that being all of us, to have an equitable voice at the table, not this over-the-top hand that they use with everything.
Thank you, Mayor. Ken, do you think Polk County has the right amounts of involvement with regional groups like DART, Bravo, Catch Des Moines, and why?
I do believe they have about the right amount for all these organizations. Des Moines carries a heavy load, partly because Polk County owns a lot of nonprofit buildings within Des Moines, and that decreases their property tax base. You know, we all benefit, hopefully, from Des Moines, as well of our towns and cities and the rural areas. So, you know, they are the area or the entity that should actually be the ones that are bringing the whole system together. And I think that's okay, because they are Polk County, and all the municipalities are basically within their jurisdiction.
Ken, if elected, what would you hope to be your biggest achievement on the citizens of Polk County in your district?
Well, the biggest would be to help our schools and, well, let's just say this. I would like us to have a lot more discussions about sustainable growth. And with that, I think we need to reevaluate the risks that are gonna come with extreme rains. We really need to be ready for extreme windstorms so that we alleviate the stress on our communities. There are always gonna be events like ice storms, deratio. Residential flooding is only getting worse, and I'm not sure we're prepared for those events. And those events not only create stress for our communities, they create more economic problems because people's insurance rates go up when their basements are flooded. I think that we do so much more to alleviate the risk to our communities. And that would be one of the things I think we really need to look at and that I would stress.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor, if elected, what would you hope to be your biggest achievement to help the citizens of Polk County in your district?
Biggest achievement I think I can do as a supervisor for this district is that be present in the district. There's been some criticism in the past of, you know, Altoona has been overlooked. There are rural townships where their levies are maxed out. Just south of here, Sailor Township Fire Department has let max out their levy. They respond to more calls than Norwalk. So they need, they need assistance for people who live in residential areas. Obviously, as I've said before, the biggest thing I wanna do is lower the tax levy. Obviously, as I've said before, the biggest thing I want to do is lower the tax levy. I want people to be able to keep their money and invest in the county and to avoid, um, you know, this over, over, um... Just to put it this way, Polk County doesn't have a revenue problem. They have a tremendous spending problem. There is plenty of money in the county with our growth that's going on and we need to get that under control. In fifteen years, or my, what my legacy I want to be is I want to start. When I started here in Ankeny, it was changing the culture of spending. You can live within your growth. You can have responsible government. Continue to fund government to the point where it provides the essential services without turning around and just giving your friends and family significant windfalls, collecting things for yourself as a supervisor that maybe other people can't get it. We need to straighten Polk County out and make it not be like Little Chicago.
Thank you. Next question. As a county supervisor, what three things are most important responsibility for you and why?
Well, with anything as a supervisor, as is with mayor and council member, the most important thing to do is to create a budget that's fiscally responsible. I'll just say create a budget but add the fiscal responsibility in there. Represent the people and respond. I, you know, people that meet me or get an email, I call everyone, I answer the phone, I respond to people. There's no one in Ankeny that I don't respond to. They may not like my answers. They may not like what they hear, but I still respond to them too. So representing the people of this district. And then third is also making sure that we straighten out everything that's going on in the county. Right now, there are four lawsuits that are going on stemming from mismanagement and that's the only personnel-related issue. They've been in the register. Uh, most recently, they dismissed the fifth lawsuit that where the supervisors were personally suing each other. They took your tax money and they settled the lawsuit. It was personal, sixty thousand dollars of tax money and they paid off another supervisor, so we dropped the lawsuit. Three things, right, that are pretty simple. Let's get government back to being something that people can be proud of at the local level.
Thank you. Ken, as a county supervisor, what three things are the most important responsibility for you?
Yes, I believe the budget is the biggest responsibility and making sure that the priorities are what it's spent on. Um, I do believe that transparency really needs to be increased so that we're making decisions based on what's best for our communities. Um, as I said before, the meetings are very short and you never really understand, um, why they vote the way they do, why projects are decided the way they do. So transparency is a big one. Um, and another one would be, um... I just think that if there's gonna be, um, work and we're gonna really provide for a better future, then we have to have more discussions. Um, I know the NPO is supposed to coordinate the whole, um, the regional system of roads and highways, but, um, there needs to be a lot more discussions about best practices, how to make our, our county and our communities more livable. Um, you know, it's, there's been decisions apparently that we don't need complete streets. Um, I think we need to take a look at those kind of decisions and not do the same old, same old and move forward as we have been.
Thank you, Ken. This position requires working with an array of stakeholders from all walks of life and a position that requires a lot of time. Can you work with the diverse populations and give the job the time and intention it deserves?
Um, yes, I do. I think that my background, working for a Fortune 500 company, um, where you are definitely expected to treat people with respect. Um, my job was negotiating contracts. I, I worked well with people. I moved up in the con, the company, um, several times because I did work well and I worked hard and I kept learning. Um, so I, I think my background is very well situated for working for, with a diverse group of people and treating people with respect so that we don't get these weird lawsuits that are happening.
Thanks, Ken. Mayor, this is a position that requires working with an array of stakeholders from all walks of life and a position that requires a lot of time. Can you work with diverse populations and give the job the time and intention it deserves?
Yes, I can. I'm doing it now, just at a different level here at the city of Ankeny. The district's about a hundred and thirty thousand people, all in. Ankeny's about seventy-five thousand of that. Past thirteen years, I've worked with everyone out there to make sure that Ankeny is front and foremost the best city that it can be. In the meantime, I have served on many multi-jurisdictional boards, uh, first being the Mental Waste Authority, which regulates all of our solid waste. Serving on that, I was elected by the thirteen members there to serve as chair. So that is, uh, that is different mayors and council members who are elected to serve on that committee. I served that chair for two years and brought us municipal recycling facilities now in Grimes to make sure that our recycling is properly disposed of and we're collecting, uh, the proceeds of that. For most reasons I mentioned before, I'm now the NPO chair, which includes the county and all the cities. It includes Warren County, um, Walkees an associate member. I've been elected chair of that. So I work well with others. Most people, anyone out there is gonna tell you that I'm a type of person who likes to listen. I'm not overly talkative. I know in these forums I gotta talk and as mayor sometimes I do too. But I like to listen, inform opinions and then go quietly about my business and try to find consensus and how best to get things resolved. And that has been recognized by my peers in, in central Iowa. And that's what I want to do with the county is I build bridges and teams for success. And that's what I want to do with the county.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you for the audience for submitting some really good, uh, questions and having a great, robust discussion up here. Uh, I will now give you ninety seconds for, for a closing statement. Uh, Ken, do you want to start with a closing statement?
Sure. So thank you again for attending and for organizing this forum so that people, the voters have a better idea of my skills, my background and, and how I would vote on the board of supervisors. As I said, I am not a politician. I'm not looking to further my college political career in any way. And I did not ever and will not ever take big campaign contributions from developers or people looking for favors from the county for their development projects. I am running to ensure smart growth so that we can keep property taxes in check while keeping up services and improving the quality of life in Polk County. I am running to reduce the strain on our communities caused by extreme weather events. And I am running to focus on supporting our public schools and public services. I will work hard. I will put in the effort to make sure I am listening to my constituents and to communicate what the board is doing. I will always make decisions based on what is best for our communities, both in the short term and in the long term. In conclusion, I am asking you to vote for working toward a better future and to vote for me, Kim Hagman, for Polk County Supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor, ninety seconds for closing remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending. You know, it's not often where we sit up and we hear people talk about what they want to do and they've actually done it. So I've lowered the tax levy in Ankeny. I'm saying that's what I'm gonna do with the county. I've implemented fiscal responsibility. We've done that here in Ankeny. Uh, and we provide a good government. I'm running on my record. And yes, I've made a lot of friends over my thirteen years. And in order to be a successful county supervisor, you've gotta make friends with people who build things out. They want to give you money. The dark side of politics is campaign donations. And I'll take, I'll take campaign donations. Um, but I work with people and that's what's important is being able to get your message out, have a consistent message and deliver what you've said. You know, we've gone from twelve oh two to nine ninety and that saved the Ankeny residents and businesses about a hundred million dollars in the last ten years. Think about it, it's a hundred million dollars of people that have to invest in what they see fit in our community. They turn around and they grow and they buy things. Um, as I said earlier, Polk County doesn't have a revenue problem. They've got a spending problem. I'm not here to push some radical climate agenda where I want to take away their stoves and furnaces and air conditioners either. I want people to make the decisions with based on a common sense approach. And what works for us here in central Iowa works for us. Something that works on the east coast or west coast isn't gonna work here. I'm asking you to vote for Mark Horn for supervisor because I'm running on a record of integrity, honesty and common sense. So that, November fifth, vote Mark Horn.
Thank you. Uh, that's good. Then round of applause. On behalf of the Ankeny Air Day Chamber of Commerce and their Government Relations Committee, I just want to thank our candidates for joining us this evening and, uh, for a great audience uh, who, who followed all the roles so well. So I really appreciate it. Thanks, my job really is. Uh, as I reminded already said, the election will take place on Tuesday, November fifth. Hey, you guys send some mini ads lately. Uh, early voting actually starts tomorrow in our country of Iowa. So, uh, the, the election technically ends on Tuesday. It starts tomorrow. So you can be able to, to, to vote. Uh, you can find all that great information at either the auditor's office or the Secretary of State's website. I know we ended a little early and I know a lot of people are probably here also for the next forum. So I know we had some refreshments of snacks. Uh, probably stand up and stretch your legs. But, uh, again, thank you both for, for being here today and, uh, running for public office.